... called us to order. Roll call.
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here. All right, approval in the minutes. Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right, presentations, NIBRS conversion presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're actually going to make a big change with the police department in the way we calculate crime statistics. It's called the National Incident-Based Reporting System. The version that we'll be using here in Missouri is the Missouri Incident-Based Reporting System, so you might hear NIBRS or MIBRS depending upon who you're talking to. So what we've been using is something called the Uniform Crime Reporting System, and it's a summary system, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. The National Incident-Based Reporting System is a more detailed system that allows us to correct, collect more criminal information about each crime that takes place, and then we'll talk about all the other stuff as well. UCR is a nationwide cooperative effort by law enforcement agencies to volunteer, voluntarily report offense data. It was established in 1927 by the IACP and placed in the jurisdiction of the FBI, so you always hear about the FBI's annual uniform crime reports that come out. It was designed as a summary-based reporting of the most serious crimes within an incident. Provides reliable crime statistics, so if you go to any community in the United States, you can compare the crime numbers from one community to another and know that the crime rates, so that you can see if they're, although they cost you not to draw conclusions, but you can see if one community is safer than another community. You can gauge the occurrence and impact of crime, and there's also a collective effort to present a nationwide view of crime when the crime reports come out, and that also provides a common language for criminal statutes. Through the 60 years of operation, UCR has remained virtually unchanged in terms of data collected and disseminated. In the late 1970s, law enforcement saw the need for more detailed crime reporting information, so they started testing for this National Incident-Based Reporting System. Most communities are still reporting UCR because there's a lot of money involved in transitioning, and I'll talk to you a little bit about how there may be a slight uptick in your crimes that are reported as well. So what is the NIBRS, the National Incident-Based Reporting System? It's an incident-based reporting system for crime. It standardizes the capturing and reporting of more detailed data, and enhances the quality, quantity, and timeliness of crime data collected by improving the methodology and completing, analyzing, and publishing the crime data. So here's how it looks with UCR. UCR has something called Part I offenses. They are the ones on the left side, and they're summary offenses. They're murder, sexual assault, or rape, robbery, assault, aggravated assaults, burglaries, theft, auto theft, and arsons. Those are called Part I crimes. The top four are called your violent crimes, and the bottom four are your property crimes. So when you talk about crime rates and index crime rates, if it's violent crime, you're talking about just those four crimes. If it's property crimes, you're talking about the bottoms. In UCR, it employs something called the hierarchy rule. So if someone were to break into your home, sexually assault you, and then murder somebody and steal a car, only one crime would be counted, and it would be a murder. All of the other crimes that were committed in the home would not be counted, so it would leave the impression that there was only one crime committed. With NIBRS, what it does, it counts each one of those crimes up to 10 offenses. So when you have a situation like that, you would have a murder, but you would also have sexual assault, you would have auto theft, and you would also have a burglary, breaking into your house, and a robbery with forcible taking of property. So you would have all of those crimes counted, which gives you a much more detailed picture of what actually happened. You can see the impact on your crime rate, though, when you, when you count all of those crimes versus just counting the one crime. But from a law enforcement perspective and from a planning perspective, having the more detailed information helps you calculate what actually happens when, when that crime is committed. You can count up to 10 offenses per incident in the NIBRS system, so again, it creates that more detailed form. The other difference, the, the big difference for us is UCR is reported on paper forms. NIBRS is reported electronically. So now with our new system, we'll be able to seamlessly report these crimes to the state. They'll be available to us much more quickly than they were with UCR. So I talked about that already. If you have one, one crime, multiple crimes, but in UCR, you'll only count the one crime. NIBRS, you count all of them. The benefits of NIBRS is it allows agencies to easily share data. We're all talking about the same thing. We've got more detailed data. Increased transparency by providing truer accountability of the actual crimes that occurred. More detail in reporting offenses, so we could collect more information about the victims, the suspects. Additional scoring category of crimes against society, such as gambling, narcotics, prostitution, and weapons offenses. So in UCR, those aren't collected, so at NIBRS, we can collect the information around crimes like that. About 90% of all incidents contain just one offense, and about 99% contain no more than two offenses. So the research from the FBI is that the effect of NIBRS on Part I crimes is minimal. A lot of times, people think that your crime rates are going to double because you're counting all these extra crimes, but most of the time, you're, you're still only counting one or two crimes. So a small increase, if you see it, will be easily explained by the fact that we're reporting the NIBRS crimes, so there are more than one crimes associated with each incident sometimes. We made a decision to transition to NIBRS with the implementation of our new records management system. Since we were creating the system from the ground up, it gave us an opportunity to just make the transition here. It saves us some departments spend in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to go back and retrofit their records management systems to report NIBRS. So for us, we just started, and we figured, you know, if we're going to make this huge change with the reporting system, we might as well make the guys change how we report crime, too. So they're, they're not real happy with us right now because they're learning two systems at once. But because they're learning two systems at once, they won't know the difference in this system. So it's going to make things a lot easier. We started our first, we have to report NIBRS in UCR to the state simultaneously until we have three months of 96% accurate NIBRS data. So we're working on getting our first month to the state done. Once we have three months of accurate data at that 96% or better level, then we don't have to report UCR anymore. We're compliant with NIBRS or MIBRS, and it'll make it much easier for staff to report all that stuff to the state. That is it. Any questions?
Who does the quality control on, on the data that's put in?
It all goes into the highway patrol, and they analyze the data to make sure that it's accurate. The great thing about our new system is we've got, it built into the system. It has a little red, NIBRS. If it's red, it has NIBRS error. If it's not red, then everything's correct. So it's, it's nice to have. We've had a few glitches with the system because our system, this is their first time in Missouri, and so they're having to build the NIBRS interface for the first time, which is part of why we got a pretty good discount on the software. So we're, we're working with them. The officers are working through it, so, so far, so good, and we're really excited about it.
Good.
So we're not the only, we're not the only place doing it?
We're not the only place doing NIBRS. We are the first, for Zerker, we're their first client in Missouri doing NIBRS.
Oh, okay.
So that, but no, NIBRS is, there's a lot of agencies that have been doing NIBRS for years just because of the detail you can get from reporting.
You see tying this to your community policing effort that you're?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've actually got a neat thing coming up pretty soon that I'll be briefing you guys on once we get it in place. That'll really put, put more of this stuff in the community for them to access.
Good.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
All right, first and second readings. Diversity-Inclusion Task Force Ordinance. An ordinance restructuring the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force and amending Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri. Matthew?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, on October the 2nd, at the October the 2nd meeting, the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force presented an ordinance that will reclassify the task force as a commission composed of seven voting members. The task force recommended a few descriptive details, wording changes as well. And we have Susie with the Diversity-Inclusion Task Force here today if you want to speak to me more about the, the changes that were made. Not sure if you guys remember the, the talk we had.
I just had one question, and I'm sure it's just me not reading it correctly. It says, "The Diversity-Inclusion Commission shall consist of seven members," and it goes on to say, "Four members will serve as ex facto, and then one city council." So then the next paragraph, it says, "We have to have four voting members." So I'm assuming the four and the one aren't counted into seven? So there are seven voting members to get to the four? Okay, I just, I figured I wasn't reading it correctly, so, okay.
So you have 12 people attending the meeting, but several of those will be voting members. You guys appoint, appoint as voting members of the commission.
Okay. All right.
That was the only question I had. Anyone else? Just need a motion to approve. Our motion to... Move to pass said ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance restructuring that Diversity and Inclusion Task Force and amending Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right. An ordinance declaring the results of the Canvas of Statements of Candidacy and establishing a general election to be held on April 3, 2018.
We have one city council position available at this time. The filing for the position began on Tuesday, December 12, and ended on January 16. This year, we had two people file for the one seat. The current candidates are Brian Jacobs and William North Wilkins. In order to get this on the April ballot, I will need to have this ordinance approved, and I will take it to the county clerk tomorrow along with the election ballot, and it will be ready then for the April the 3 election.
I move said bill be passed second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance declaring the results of the Canvas of Statements of Candidacy and establishing a general election to be held on April the 3, 2018. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance repealing certain provisions of Section 22-64 regarding business license taxes of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. All right, it's like Carl's up on that one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city is looking at upgrading its in-code software, which also includes an upgrade to the business licenses. And in order to set up this whole system, we have some license classifications that are outdated and are no longer valid for either current ordinances, or for instance, one of them introduces drayage that still references horse-drawn cart. So that kind of tells you how outdated some of them are. So we've basically just cleaned up some of the classifications, and the ones that are outdated will be moved over to the general business classification that's based on estimated gross income. Any questions?
And the next three ordinances?
Are all include that.
Changes that you're recommending.
Yeah, and the other ordinances, we have tree service and pest control. We're just putting in the ordinance that we require them to provide liability insurance. We do that at this time, but we needed to have it listed within the ordinance as a requirement to kind of give us a basis to add it to the licenses. And another ordinance that we had was back in the day when we had the pinball places, Arcade. They used to license each individual machine. As far as I know, that ordinance was never enforced, and since everybody now pretty much does everything on computer, we just need to remove that outdated ordinance as well.
So did we use the license per bowling lane? I was talking about the bowling alley.
Yeah, the bowling alley was licensed per lane, and that was back when we had several of them around. And that would be the same as any of the other ones that would be based on an estimated gross income rather than having to go by how many lanes was in the bowling alley itself.
On the insurance of, I guess we're ready to talk about that one as well, the pest control.
Sure, sure.
I noted that we're requiring $25,000 liability.
The, most of the other ordinances we have, considering solicitors and itinerant vendors and things, that is the minimum amount of insurance that they require. The state does have some regulations on pest control, but tree service is kind of a lucrative business that does involve accidents at some time, so we thought it would be good to have that ordinance in there. That's kind of a standard amount of minimum insurance that liability is required for those types of services.
Yeah, it just seemed like a, not much insurance, you know, for the liability that one would incur with those kinds of businesses.
Most of them do carry what they call a blanket million.
Right.
But in some cases, the minimum of $25,000 allows the smaller companies to be able to do business without causing too much problems with them being able to get a license.
I don't have any more.
Thank you.
So the first one, the city license one?
Yep. Just need a motion to...
Make the motion now. Move to second reading? Move, move to second reading by title. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs. This is an ordinance repealing certain provisions of Section 22-64 regarding business license taxes of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance adopting Section 22-76 regarding insurance requirements for certain occupations, occupations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. Carl covered that already, so...
I move said bill be passed second reading by title?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance adopting Section 22-76 regarding insurance requirements for certain occupations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Other businesses. We do? Okay, gotta get, gotta get pinball machines. I mean, they're coming back. An ordinance repealing Section 4-2 related to amusement devices of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg.
Move that said bill be passed the second reading by title? Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance repealing Section 4-2 related to amusement devices of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. I need to create an arcade for you. You're paying taxes on these machines?
Sorry, Carl, I said I'd hope to never see you again.
All right, other business. Approval of contract for compensation and benefits consulting services. Approve city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Austin Peters Group, Inc. for human resource consulting services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. During the fourth quarter of 2017, we did issue a request for proposal for the employee compensation classification consulting services. At the end of the year, December 29, we did receive four qualified proposals for those services. In the fiscal year 2018, approved budget was an amount of $38,000 for these services. After the first year, after the first of the year, those proposals, along with evaluation forms, were sent out to all of the department heads within the city. They completed those evaluation forms, turned them in to myself. In addition, Matthew, Lou, and myself made reference calls on each of those proposals. On Tuesday, January 16, we met, reviewed the summary tabulations and, and references on all four of those firms. Staff, by unanimous choice, the proposal that was submitted was the Austin Peters Group at a bid price of $43,400. While again, this, this amount is under the authority limit of $100,000 that we have bid proposals, the staff did want to seek your approval or blessing in moving forward for two reasons. From a transparency standpoint, the, the proposal that was selected by the staff was not the lowest bid. And so we wanted to take that opportunity to explain to you why we chose that firm. There were two other firms that were lower bid, one that was higher. The two that were lower, between the evaluations by the staff and/or the reference calls on those firms showed concerns in several areas, whether it would be understanding the scope of the project, the experience or skill of the, of the staff in working with municipalities or cities, customer relations, responsiveness. There were, one of those firms actually had made quite a large error at another city in the past in these services. And so, you know, as far as also working with cities of similar size and, and experience, the Austin Peters Group stood out above the rest. Second, the proposal selected from Austin Peters, it was over the budgeted amount for our services of $38,000 from fiscal 2018 budget. However, the staff has developed a plan to pay for the increased anticipated cost of those services, and that exhibit is attached as the exhibit to, to your information there. What you see there is that we took the total amount of $43,400 and divided the total number of full-time employees into that amount to develop a cost per employee. And then that was essentially charged back into the, the three areas that you see there, city employees, parks employees, and the WPC employees, based upon the number of employees that that represented to the total in proportion.
What's the WPC? Well, that's the facility folks, and then the parks employees are the staff.
So basically, we're going to spread that cost out among the three different funds? So the general fund, the sewer fund, and the parks fund.
So what you see there is when, when you do that breakdown, the city employee number is $35,414, which actually does fall below the budgeted amount for the city services. And then we did, you know, approach the others about the cost-sharing arrangement here. And what we wanted to do tonight was present that to you and seek your approval to move forward with the contract for the Austin Peters Group.
What was the difference in price between Austin Peters and the other bidders?
The cost difference, CBIZ, was 37.7. Evergreen was 28.5. And then the one that was higher was Gallagher at $64,250.
Woo! That's the local, isn't it?
And the other entities have already agreed to share in that cost.
The, we've approached the folks with the WPC, and they have agreed. We have presented it to Parks. I don't know whether she's had the opportunity yet at this point to adopt to the board.
So what happens if they come back and say that they can't do it? Will there be another option to fund this?
Well, we'd have to make up the difference out of the general fund. But what we proposed at Parks is, we did, we did joint, we did budget for a joint-funded HR position, and now we're halfway through the fiscal year that hasn't been filled. So there should be funds there available to do that. And another recommendation we're making with regard to that position, although Danielle will... By the way, this is Danielle Fessler, our Parks Director. First meeting. But we've also proposed that we may wait on filling that position until she has some time on her feet to assess whether that's needed or not, so we may actually go the entire fiscal year. So we budgeted $50,000, $25,000 out of general fund, and $25,000 out of the Parks Fund that right now, we don't anticipate using.
Could be a few seasons in the same position. We have some open slots there that we have to charge the state and general.
All of the reasons for selecting this company over the, the two lower bids, all of those are well documented in case we get back. I know you fill that square, but...
Yeah, I've got the valuations for each individual department head.
Okay.
As to why, as well as documentation of, of our phone calls made to the reference.
So you need an approval to spend the $42,000?
Yeah, we just wanted to seek your approval.
There's a ratification. Again, typically, this would, this would normally be within our budgetary policy as far as procurement, but we've committed to staff that any time that it does come inside the overall budget or we're not going to lowest bidder, we bring it back to council before we proceed.
We need a move to approve. I would make that motion to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, clear as climate of the court discussion. So I figure what we'll do here is we'll open it up to you guys to have a little discussion with us, too. I figure we'll let the council start, and then, you know, if you've got a couple people that want to be your speakers, that'd be great, you know. We will make it work and... All right, I mean, I guess I'll start here. Based on what I've, you know, researched and stuff like that, and the presentations that were given to us, I think there's some great stuff in there. I'm personally a little nervous about putting Warrensburg on the hook for signing it. You know, I think there's, I mean, when they, the guy from Kansas City came down, he had a lot of great stuff, but there were a lot of big-ticket numbers there, and we're trying to bring people into Warrensburg, to develop in Warrensburg, and I just think if we were to come down and say you had to build at this standard, some of these companies would go, they can head down the street. So, you know, I'm in support of some of the stuff, but I'm not in support enough to be able to put my name on the, their agreement there. Anybody else want to?
I think one of the good things it did do was bring to light some of the areas that we can improve on the environmental impact that we're making as a community. And I do think, I mean, I know it sounds silly, but look how much paper we just saved being able to switch over some stuff like that, things that I think were brought to the forefront of your mind once you realize, you know, the environmental impact.
I mean, that's, you know, the, the paper being, you know, eliminating the paper, that's, that's a... I mean, I'm, I'm willing to guess in about four council meetings, each one of these needs to be paid for already.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm pretty sure we're close to that. I know Chief Lockard's working to get us some electric motorcycles. I'm a huge fan of that idea. He, you know, he happened to be over in Hawthorne and stopped by there and showed it to me, and I was like, "I want this!"
I think switching new, I didn't mean to... Switching new software to go primarily electronic is valuable as well.
You know, it's, it looks like a lot of the city stuff is going paperless, so that's a plus. I mean, believe me, I, I want the trees, I want all that stuff, too. So I'm in support of, you know, of getting it. I'm just not there to put my name on, you know, the agreement. We got the new fire trucks, so I'm sure those burn less gas when they roll out, you know. I mean, I don't know, what else have we got? We put new, you know, well, I don't know if the air conditioning systems are installed yet over there at the... Okay, so we put three brand-new units on there. We got all the controls set up finally over there that we can, that we can now control the environment in each room, so we're not heating, we're not cooling the entire building now. We're, you know, cooling what needs to be cooled. So I mean, those are all steps that we're making, and we're very happy to make those. And we'd love to hear you guys when you come, you know, come out and give us ideas. I mean, we're, we're listening, you know. We're just, we're just not there to put our name on that line, you know, but, I mean...
I guess I'd, I'd like to ask, when you come to join the discussion, one, what's the goal for citizens for environmental action? What, what is your goal? And how would you see yourself playing as part of the decision-making process for any further development or any further action that, that the city council may take? I'd like to hear your input on at least those two things.
Go ahead. Do you, if somebody wants to step up to the mic here? So that way we got it, everybody can hear it.
We're not worried about the snow, right, Brian? Just hearing a few of you express your opinions, I think maybe, maybe what we're asking is not all that different from... Just hearing a few of you express your opinions, I think maybe, maybe what we're asking is not all that different from what you're thinking about. Just to maybe bring everybody kind of up to speed, the Climate Agreement was a US government agreement where we said we would lower our carbon emissions 26% to 28% by 2025, from our 2005 level. I did major in math, and I'm guessing that possibly the city doesn't even know what their emissions were in 2005. And if that's true, you couldn't knowingly even meet that, you know, that standard. You know, I obviously would be really pleased if we could do that, but it seems like that's a little unrealistic. So the, the other, another option is signing what's called the "we're still in" declaration, which means you support that idea, and then, in ways that you can move forward, which you obviously are talking about, you know, right now. We as a city do that. And the, you know, the university has already signed on to that. 2,500 businesses, educational institutions, and counties, and states have signed on to that "we're still in" document. So that doesn't mean if you sign into that, you have to meet these 26% to 28% goals. So I would see that as a, something that could be done, and then the city could plan in some way to work at reducing emissions. Some of the things you've already talked about, or some of the things that you were brought in from Kansas City, you know, some of those ideas. Some would work here, some wouldn't. You've mentioned the building codes, and you said that would work, but maybe for the city, or, you know, the school and the university have built a couple pretty energy-efficient buildings, and maybe the city could at least say that anything they did was at a certain level. I mean, these are just ideas I'm throwing out, so... I don't know that we have, as a CEA, decided exactly how we wanted to be involved in this. I know there are at least a couple of us that would be willing to work on a task force, or with a group of people who would try to come up with ideas that the city could use, you know, for our type of, our size of city and what we're trying to do here. You know, that, that along with other community members, hopefully businesses, city council, at least somebody from the city council owns, people from the city, to, to really look at things and try to make decisions that will lower our emissions as we, as we move forward. So I think that's, that's what I'm thinking anyway. And I don't know if Steve wants to say something, or Vernon, Vernon and Steve and I were the ones that brought it to you back in September. And we have a number of people here tonight that are here just for this particular item, and are very supportive of the city doing something. I think it would be, you know, if the city stepped up and said they were still in, then I think that could be looked at as a kind of a leadership thing for our community. We as individuals can sign a pledge that says, "I'm still in," and, you know, that would hopefully spread it out from just the city doing something that all of us as citizens would try to do something to, to work at this issue, so... Do you want me to get out of here?
You're gonna have to fill in the gaps anyway. I, I'm gonna really try not to repeat what Phil just said, even though I think it's worth repeating. Okay, I'll try not to do that. I, as I thought about this, I tried to think about, well, first of all, what is it about emissions that we really can get a hold of? And basically, emissions can be reduced by improving efficiency, which you've already indicated would be a good idea. And it's a win-win thing, you save money. Or looking at different and alternative sources of energy, I mean, it's basically efficiency and energy. Well, it's possible, and you've already talked about this, changing the temperature on your thermostat's a behavior thing, but certainly uses less energy. So there's another option for winning. So I thought, well, okay, it seems like there's good reasons for doing this. Are there good reasons for not doing it? And when I say doing this, I'm basically echoing what Phil said. Make some sort of intentional, take an intentional position that we are concerned about efficiency and energy. And we know that we can work at that and reduce emissions. You could do it by saying "we're still in," because that doesn't commit you to any given action, just trying to do what you can, is what it commits you to. So that'd be a possibility. I think that there are certainly people in the community that have spent a lot of time, and unfortunately, used a lot of paper, pulling stuff off the internet about this, that are very interested. And would be interested in just looking at what goes on with the city, and maybe, hey, here's an idea. Now, I was trying to find something in your agenda this evening that I could say that about, well, here's a place for efficiency or energy reduction. Unless some of the game equipment, you know, could be required by an energy efficiency standard or something like that. I couldn't come up with anything, actually. But occasionally, I think we would come up with something, or we might have some ideas that aren't on the agenda at this point that we could throw out and say, "Hey, what about this? Could we do this?" So why would we not do this, is my question? As far as I know, there's nothing illegal about it, and the city, I don't think, has any contracts there that this would violate if we got into this area. I'm being a little bit, I don't know, offbeat here, I guess. I don't think it's immoral. I can't, I can't, I try to come up with reasons. Are we scared? Probably a little, because this is new territory here. But I haven't known people like yourselves to run scared very often. I just can't, I've tried to think of reasons. Why shouldn't we do this? So I don't think I can add much to that.
Well, I think that we all can agree that we all want the same thing, and we've already gone down the road of doing a lot of these efficiencies and some of the studies. You know, we, we've spoke to discuss the reporting aspect of the, specifically the Paris Climate Accord. And no, unfortunately, we don't have the data that we need to substantiate our percentage 26% of, of reduction, so that's kind of out the window. But we definitely want to do better at publicizing whenever we are making these changes. A lot of changes we've already made in efficiencies and lowering emissions. We could definitely do a better job at sharing that and maybe leading the charge in our city. We want to be cautious with any mandates that could stifle our economic growth. You know, we want to be careful with, you know, somebody comes out to rural Missouri, we don't want to do anything that's going to turn somebody away from Warrensburg. We want to be careful there. Someday, that may come, but right now, we want to be cautious with that. But we definitely want to grasp any opportunity to, to save money, to lower emissions, but also to do it in a way that would bring awareness to the others in our community. And I think moving forward, we would need your help in order to do that, to be able to form a task force, or whatever it may be, to help coach us and find those ideas, or the rebates, or whatever it may be, to help us get to that next level. And then, when we do so, how do we share that with, with others and celebrate that more? I think we could all agree that we want to do that. Now, as far as signing things, we, we want to be careful from an economic perspective with that. And, but I think that we're still in, we'd be happy to look at that. But the Paris Climate Accord, I was concerned because of the reporting aspect. I didn't want to set a goal and then fail to live up to expectations. But we're, we've already done a lot of similar things that they've done at Kansas City, and will continue to do so. We just maybe can be better at sharing that with others and maybe looking a little harder. But we appreciate you guys doing all the work that you've done and bringing it to us. The next step would be task, I would be assuming task force-related, and let's get some experts involved in a discussion on how we can go about being better at doing this.
I would not disagree with that at all, Casey. I think we, the city could do a lot more than, than we are doing. Unfortunately, doing those things like lead certifying every building in, in the city, great goal, but how realistic is it? So to say that, I would not be opposed to, to signing a proclamation saying that we, we are still in. But before I would propose doing that, it's toothless unless, I mean, it's just a piece of paper. Unless we have citizens like yourselves that are willing to serve on a task force, that would advise the council on ways to get from here to there. So, you know, that's, I guess the ball's kind of...
I can't start till next month.
Yeah. So that's...
I, I think we're in agreeance. We're just, how do, what type of letter of support or support do we, what avenue do we express our support and move forward? And I think that no matter what we do with the signing, a task force to help us along is going to be necessary, and then can help guide how we go about it and how we publicize it to make the greatest impact, is, is the next step.
And, you know, frankly, when I thought about it, I thought, you know, if I run the council, this is about where I'd have to end up. You know, that makes some sort of statement about what this is about. And to accomplish this, we'll begin by asking a task force to continually bring this to our attention, something like that.
We need, we need your group to bring this stuff up to us, because we don't wake up in the morning thinking about, you know, solar panels and things like that.
It's strange that anybody would wake up thinking about that.
I think about if I get my utility bill, I'm going, "Yeah, but..."
It's a good time.
And there's many ways to sell this. As we move forward, we need to look at those. You know, some are, are going to look at it from different perspectives. Some, it may be an environmental impact, and they may be willing to, to pay more to, to lower the, the emissions. And some may say it has to make economic sense. And so, how do we educate all of those parties? We all want the same result. How do we, how do we move forward to bring more people into the discussion and, and express those, those ways that we can all benefit? And you, and you can celebrate the win however you want, but it's definitely a win at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, and, you know, it's really interesting what you mentioned, when you start thinking about all the different possibilities there are. And a lot of them will pay back more than they cost. But not all of them.
Right.
The last list I saw was just this week, and the one single thing that this country could do to lower emissions most, the single area of activity involves refrigerants, which is going to cost. There's not going to be any payback there. It's not going to make refrigeration more efficient.
Makes it more costly.
So, yeah, but, so you're absolutely right.
So the two things that, that I asked earlier, earlier was, what's your goal as citizens against our, yeah?
Environmental action, yeah. What, what's your goal here tonight? And the other was, if we formed a task force, what role would you see yourselves playing in that? So...
Well, I think our goal would be that the city declares this is an area of interest. And then, make some action to make that happen, to make that real, such as a task force. And we haven't gathered volunteers, you know, for the task force, because I think the task force ought to be fairly diverse.
Right.
You know, I, I think, you know, two people that if we were asked, would probably serve. But I, I, I don't know if you're asking if we have other people, because we haven't talked to any that I know of about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would kind of echo that. I would really like to see you sign the "we're still in" thing, because it doesn't actually commit the city any percentage to anything like that. But along with that, then, the task force is going to put a little meat on that.
Yeah.
Probably even some of your public speakings at the high school level or the college level, you know, once you get this task force, to let those kids think about
Sure.
what you are, what your goal is. Because some of it, they may already think of, but some of them may not even think, "Oh, yeah."
And, yeah, I think that would be very supportive in several ways. I mean, we have the advisor to the high school environmental club here, and then we have the Office of Sustainability at UCM. What's the specific title on UCM?
Student Sustainability Coordinator.
Coordinator. We have the president of the Wildlife Society.
Okay.
They're very interested in this. And so, I think, and that's another thing that kind of appeals to me about signing on to the "we're still in." It indicates kind of a solidarity position between the city and the university, since the university's already done that.
Well, I'm not speaking for Brian, but I know he wasn't saying that he was not for this at all, but I understand Casey and all of us talking about how we are, we want to understand more before we are all in.
Well, but, but again, I...
We're all in support.
Absolutely.
What avenue we, we sign the support, we, we want to be cautious.
Well, not only that, but I don't want to, I'm not real big on signing something just because it looks good.
I want to understand it.
That, yes, what we, our goal was.
Yeah.
And we've kind of tried to articulate that.
Uh-huh, got that.
But the most disappointing outcome would be if the city were to sign on and do nothing.
Right, exactly.
That is the...
See, I, I'm more in the vote of not signing that, but creating this task force and, you know...
Yeah, and the declaration that says we could have similar life problems, probably, but yes.
I mean, do us have a proclamation, you know, saying we're in support without signing a national document or whatever that document...
I think the younger generation needs to understand too, so we can bring that up for 2025 or 2030, when some of us might not be around.
Does a task force require
I don't know.
an ordinance, like creating a task force?
Diversity, no?
No.
You can, but it's not necessary.
Yeah.
Depends on how long...
That's just how you want it, how many people you want on it. That's, that's up to you guys.
We haven't really given...
Put it on the agenda for, you put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Or thought you can.
To just have a motion to...
Oh, yeah, seven's a good number.
Yeah.
Well, I think he was saying, or Mr. Harris was just saying that you guys can do what you want on it, doesn't have to be a...
Saying it doesn't have to be an ordinance.
Right.
The city can take action by multiple resolution to establish something like this with a specific timeframe for reports back. Or if you want to establish it as a permanent commission of the city, you can do that as well by ordinance. It's really up to you, but you can choose what path you take.
Yeah, it depends on how temporary or long-term you want this to be. So if you want a temporary task force to come up with recommendations to help you make an action, then no, no ordinance is required. If you want it to be more formal and more established, then you can basically create that in code, which then triggers an actual process to go to actually disband it.
The one thing I would say that we've, that we've learned from experience over the course of the last five or six years is that it's probably better to start out informally and let that body make recommendations to you, because otherwise, what happens is you establish it with your best effort, and then you come back and revise it again 18 months later.
I love saying, I mean, it can, it can continue to operate for many years about it ever being an ordinance.
I was going to say, the template, the recent template was established with the diversity task force, where that appears to be working well, very successful, yes. So, you know, I, I would propose that we would follow that template in whatever, however we choose to move forward. And I think that began with a, not a resolution.
No, we did, that's nearby ordinance.
Does it need to go by... They needed a certain time they do the minutes, their public meetings, you know?
Well, yeah, they, they do now, but I'm talking about the inception of it. Yeah. So I think following that template seemed to work there. And I would propose that we would use that template to move forward.
I think we can go ahead and, and establish some motions here to get the, the ball rolling. So I move to establish a task... So, I move to establish a task, a task force on, you know, an environmental task force that the mayor will appoint, and I bet there's the first two appointees right there.
That's it, I said two.
To start a discussion. And I think this is going to be open enough that you'll have flexibility to be able to appoint as many as you want. And we can kind of figure this out as we go.
Right.
But to establish a name, as well as, you know, a general purpose and a mission, a goal. And I move that we establish said task force, whatever name you deem appropriate. I don't want to pigeonhole you into a name that's not appropriate. So, on the topic that we're discussing, that that will be, that's what I'm proposing, to establish it wide open. The mayor can appoint whoever he sees fit. I see the two best alternatives right in front of you, and see where it goes from there. And they're going to have folks that they know, and it will build from there, I think.
Well, I'm assuming that there would be somebody, the city council or somebody that's...
We will be, yeah, so, and it'll be somebody. We're not sure who it's going to be, but it's going to be, it's not going to be formal at the moment, so we'll have options. And then later on, I think it will become more formalized as we move forward. But we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves and then have to amend and go through the headache later on.
I just, it's not, you know, I don't want it to sound like it's just our thing.
No.
No, no.
You're just the expert that's going to be helping us.
I could see, in fact, it would be the inclusion of the folks that are represented from the university or school district representatives and stuff.
Maybe we get, maybe we can get a rep from KC P and L to sit on it. Yeah, because, I mean, they did all the utility, all the lights outside, so...
Sounds like we're asking for you to report back with some recommendations, is what it sounds to me like.
I thought that was what it's...
In other words, bring us back to task force now.
But it also appears to me that the vetting process for these people is not real extensive.
Pretty much it's a one-page application. It's a one-page application.
A lot of it just kind of wants why you want to be on the task force. Obviously, you know, what's the main, it's like, "I don't even know what you're talking about, but I want to be on it."
But we could work at that, couldn't we?
Yeah, I was wondering if there'd be somebody on the council that would want to work at that with us as well?
One of us will. If somebody else jumps up, I will be happy to...
And I would be happy to do it, so...
And those are probably your two best, because, you know... He's done it for years, and he probably deals with tons of EPA rules, so...
Well, I move to establish said, said group, said task force at the mayor's discretion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Wad?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
All right, let's see here. Paris is a council, not listed on the agenda.
That's one's way to check.
Those might be names for them. Is there anybody on there? Those are your last people.
Yeah.
My name's Arius.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Phil and Steve.
Yep. All right, so, yeah, Phil and Steve. So, do you have anything else, or you good? All right.
Steve just checked those beforehand, and he said he didn't sign up.
I actually thought there was one back there for that, but that was my fault, so... Let's see here. Miss Ladies Matters from the mayor and our city council?
I don't think I have anything right now.
I have nothing.
Let's see here. My glasses on these letters get bigger.
City manages report?
Things are starting to get pretty busy. As I know, tonight's agenda is fairly light, but we do anticipate repeating that in February. So, we're ready for some long meetings.
Hey, that's not funny.
A lot of positive progress, but a lot of things to do. And also, staff is getting geared up, beginning the budget process as well. But also, there's a lot of meetings. JCDC will have Janet Hady coming in and doing an assessment of our community as far as helping us identify different trade areas that would make sense to be within our community so we can begin aggressively recruiting and trying to bring them to our community. And she will be here in mid-February. Also, I just signed up today to go to the Missouri municipal league's legislative conference. And that's February 13th and 14th. If any of you would like to go, and you're welcome to join me as well. But it's an opportunity to talk about what the legislators, legislators are talking about. Well, there's definitely been a lot of issues facing local government, ranging from capping what sales tax we can charge to changing TIF laws and a lot of other things that definitely bears our attention and expressing our opinions to our representatives. But other than that, everything continues to move forward well. Projects are moving forward, as was outlined in the budget, and then the projects and commitments that we've made. So, appreciate the work staff has been doing. And I kind of did it earlier, but again, I'd just like to express a welcome to Ms. Vesper, and look forward to working with you and the Parks Department in the future, and I'll look to the best I could be. I don't have anything else.
I'd like to welcome the Parks director as well.
Director Finance report?
Well, in your package today, we have a quarterly report for the first quarter of fiscal '18. There's, there's four separate reports in there. The first is the revenue report. And it's in the format that you've seen in the past, where it kind of shows the four consecutive quarters. And then I added a second report to both the revenue and the expense report. It kind of shows you a comparison of the first quarter of '17, then compared to this first quarter of '18, and then our first quarter budget as well. So, right now, we're doing pretty good. We're right on budget. We brought in a little more than expected, and we spent a little less than expected for first quarter of fiscal year '18. So, that's, that's pretty good. But as always, there's a little bad news. I think I warned you guys last, last time, that the money that we received in January was down around 20%. Yeah, around 21% on the sales tag. So, hopefully, we can get a bounce back again sometime in this quarter, put us back on track.
Barbara?
Nothing additional. Stay tuned for February 12th.
It's the second warning.
Should we plan on having lunch from there? Slip?
Nothing additional.
IT?
No, sir.
Welcome aboard? Did they prepare you for anything today? Do you want to, you want to introduce yourself to the group that's out here?
Sure. I'm Danielle Vessler, and I started on Wednesday, and I came from Grandview.
Anything great?
Nothing additional.
All right. Different face?
The fire chief has a new metal knee.
All right.
And the last text I got from his wife, he's doing well.
Good.
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 And a sore thumb.
And a sore thumb from doing this.
I have nothing, nothing for you in February either, so...
Nothing in February?
Thank goodness.
Nothing?
Nothing additional.
Carl was going to ask you then, and I forgot to. The little signs you're putting on doors, are those helping more with the revenue coming in for the sewer? The disconnect notices? Are you putting too many of them out?
Actually, the disconnect notices that we do really don't make a whole lot of difference. The history that we've had, even when we had wastewater before, they're pretty much concurrent. They don't fluctuate a lot, especially with the incoming and outgoing of UCM. So, it does make a difference, like when school leaves and stuff. But basically, those, the percentage varies, but it's pretty much steady throughout.
I know when I find them on my rentals, I try to call you and tell you, "There's no one living there, and I'll put a red one on."
They do work a lot better than our previous option that we had looked at when we did it, such as what Missouri American Water does. They just seem better. So, I mean, even some of the residents have, some don't like it, but they have expressed it. It is helpful to add them on the door to let them know that that's something that needs to be of attention.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks.
And, yeah, Ethan?
Yes, in addition to our mayor, who's running for city council, we also have in the audience Will Wilkins, who's also running. Do you want to stand up, serving? Sorry. Thank you.
I don't think we have any, need to go back into closed session, right? All right, then, so on that note, I'm going to adjourn.
So, what are we going to download, so? How do we download it?
So...
We can just start that, eh?
Yep.
Right, does it start?
Yep.
So, as soon as I have Wi-Fi, I...
I'm so sorry you had to ask me this. I just wanted to know if you got me, you was busy editing.
I wasn't worried about it. I was like, "All right, I'm here, we're off to February."
Well, when I went back to my original email, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, December 15th."
Well, see, and for you guys, what I didn't get a chance to mention over there is once we get through this project, that looks at all of our job descriptions and those types of things too.
Okay.
We're hoping that helps us get to that standard performance system, which then should get us to a standard format for all performance evaluations of the entire city. Once that happens, then we're talking about efficiency, because that's what we're getting. On the system, do it electronically.
Yeah, electronic on these will be great.
Instead of standard formats, I mean, you know, you can get through faster, you know what you're doing.
Also, if they were cohesive to the ones the city manager has, if they were formatted the same, that would help in the future.
Exactly. And, and, you know, the way I looked at that, the only thing different there is because his job is so expansive, his might be the one that might be a bit different, just because of the job duties and the things he contains.
But you mean, one, I guess I'm thinking the 1-2-3 or the 1-3-5?
Oh, yes, yes.
The 1-2-3 would be mine?
Same format, yeah.
Just to have the same idea of how you're rating them?
Well, and I've never liked a five system anyway, because I like to force people to make it in one direction. Yeah, exactly. Otherwise, it's like, they're always on the fence, so they never want to jump in.
I don't know, it says wife and spouses club, there are men's.
Thank you, well, I guess I'm, I guess I'm going myself back on too far, so... I guess my husband's in the military now, and they do it to our liking.
I do think there will be more women than men.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, no, I bet there's also one there. Is that two? I'm happy to go for you, or...
You want to go?
Let's see if I can.
I mean, if the city wants to buy an entire couple, the entire council, you go.
I'll be probably going in.
They'll travel everybody.
All righty, see you later. I can make it easy. Soon as I can find a pen, huh? You want to go to that video? Do I get to keep that? Invitation? Yeah. Because I'm going to have to give them money. Is it supposed to be me or my husband, or which one is appropriate for that? It was all new to me. I told Brian I'd never been to a baby and I was totally... I can take pictures. Oh, you know what? I got this. The only thing I will probably use this thing for.
Yeah, I imagine mine will go back on the shelf. I did, I will have to say that I did download Whiteboard and play a bit a little bit.
They'll all have to help me with mine.
Because Whiteboard's been the, is the one thing that's making me wanting to buy an Apple for the office. So, I did download...
Keynote? Or what? So, Keynote is a good one too, because you can go right to Apple D B N, it's like a giant PowerPoint. It's really...
Well, I think that's, I think I already downloaded it.
Yeah, I mean, it's costing me more money, but I'm just curious if it's something I would like to see too. Isn't this like a, like a, seems like it'd be kind of a black tie kind of thing? Just curious if it's something I bring my husband to. What is it? The gift from the hard charity option is based? It's a spouses' club event, so I would think you bring your spouse? I didn't know it. Is that something you and the mayor's got invited to? Yeah, the mayor, the mayor got invited.
Sesame user Instant Pot the other day?
What's that?
Sesame user Instant Pot?
I love it now. I've made four things in it, and I love it.
It's a kitchen appliance, so it's like a pressure cooker, ice cream.
Pressure cooker and a crock pot. I made, so I know a lot of people don't like split beef soup. I love it, and I buy the bag of like the split beefs at Walmart. It normally takes six hours in a crock pot. I sent that all in with chicken broth and the vegetables and everything last night. 20 minutes, and it was done. You can hard boil eggs in five minutes, and even that, they were a little overcooked. I'm here. The best, yeah. And the eggs usually look poor by the time it's done.
My wife has a recipe, she'll do a potato salad, she'll make the potatoes, have the eggs on top, and then you do it all in one pot.
That's awesome, great. Yeah, I did mashed potatoes in 10 minutes the other day. It took me 100 potatoes to do that. Like, I never do...